Mr. Bell, we're gonna have prayer tonight. Ben Gratzinger is gonna lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you so much for this opportunity to gather and to speak into the fore to your amongst brothers and sisters, where it is a thing that is less and less common. We're so thankful to have this opportunity to do it, my Lord. And we just pray that your Holy Spirit, and I know your Holy Spirit is here because we are here, and we just pray that your Holy Spirit touches us, shakes us, and moves us in a way that may soften us, may make us a little more understanding of what everybody's going through, and you honor our hearts. And if it weren't for our hearts, none of us would be here. And Father God, we just ask that you do what you do, and to show us how to love and to be an example like you were an example, and whatever that may look like. And Father God, I just ask you this in your wonderful name, Jesus Christ, and thank you for the ball victory on Saturday night in your name we pray.
Mr. Montgomery, now do the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk, we call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown. Randy England.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton. Brad Hillis.
Here.
James Hines. Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Kenny Moffett.
Here.
Cam Montgomery.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Chris Rippey.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Donna Smith.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire. Twenty present, three absent.
All right, do I hear a motion, we adopt the docket?
We adopt.
Got a motion by Scott Ruble, second by Cole Taylor. Anybody want to speak to amend the docket?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the docket by adding amendment number HWYFY2223-1 as a Highway Department amendment, and if the docket passes, I'd like that to be item 12.
Do I hear a second? Got a second by Cole Taylor. All those in favor of adding the amendment to the docket signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. All right, now we're back on the original docket. All those in favor of approving our original docket, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Got one no? Okay, oh yes. Okay, we'll move on to the, we've adopted our docket, the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes with one amendment, please, sir. Last month, when we brought up about the TIF for the blue building, we had a roll call vote, and it was a nineteen, two, and one pass, and that needs to read differently because we had a little error there, and that will be one that passed did not get corrected, it was put down as a yes vote. So we've got that corrected on our minutes, but we do need to spread that upon this funds.
All right, you make a motion to dispense the reading.
Yes, I make a motion to dispense the reading as well. Approve the minute.
Do I hear a second? Got a second by Tommy Savage, anybody have any questions? If no one has any questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This is, we'll move right on to the elected officials and department reports. Mr. Justin Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. I do my best to answer any questions you have at this time.
We accept.
We got a motion by Scott, a second by Mr. Philip Stout. Does anybody have any questions? If you have no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, is Ms. Bradley here? Blaine, do you want to take that?
I can, everyone has their report in front of them. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Yeah, motion to adopt.
I will do that too, motion to adopt.
I got a motion by Blaine, do I hear a second? Got a second by Stevie Glenn. Anybody got any questions about the animal control? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. The IDB quarterly report, Mr. Don Alexander, and if y'all all would, please keep Mr. Alexander's family in your prayers, he lost his father last night. So, we're very sorry, Mr. Alexander, we turn it over to you. Got a move, a motion by Cole Taylor, a second by Michael Bell. See if they have any questions. No one has on the whole in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll keep you in our prayers, no one. All right, Mr. Ron Lee, the planning commission report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you've got the report. If there's any questions, Commissioner Glenn or I will try our best to answer.
Do I hear a motion?
We approve.
Got a motion by Ron Lee to adopt.
Second.
Got a second by Brad Hillis. Any questions for the planning commission? If no one has no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Ms. Andrea Fox on the Health Department. Got a motion by Cole Taylor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Casey Owens. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I just was wondering if we having any kind of COVID at all here in McMillan now, cases that you are of, is it?
Very, very low.
Very good, that's what I want to hear.
Ms. Fox, I had somebody ask if y'all were gonna bring the flu vaccine up here to the county building and offer it to the employees.
Please, surely, Danny, you want it.
Okay, I think that would be good for employees.
We're just calling, you guys wanna sign up here?
Okay.
We'll call and get a number, bring a number.
All right. Any more questions about the report? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we'll move into committee reports. Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report at this time.
All right, I think Building Grounds. Bill McGolden has less than report at this time. Economic and Agriculture Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and Agriculture Development will have another meeting December the sixth. In our past meeting, the IDB board reported that they're gonna have a couple of surprises for us in the future, but that's all he told us, and maybe Donna enlighten us on that shortly. And the fire, I guess you read in the paper, had a breakout year, over forty-seven thousand dollars more than normal they took in, and it was, the fire was a huge success this year. That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stout, Education.
Thank you. The Education Committee meeting will take place October 11th at West Elementary School, and Director Grant Swannus granted, gave us a review of the new funding formula and the model for the public school replacement fee funding, and update on the current school projects, and Principal Michelle Lewis gave us a tour of the facility. And I talked to the Governor Lee today, and he feels that the new funding formula will bring in more money for the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, financial management has nothing to report. We'll move on to Health and Welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stacy Harvey and myself will probably be meeting sometime this week to kind of look at possibility of what he may or may not donate to us. He is eager to help, and so when we know a little bit more about what maybe he can help us out with, I'll be letting everybody know.
All right, thank you. Highway and Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a meeting this coming Thursday at four o'clock at the Highway Department. We've had a lot of roads that we wanted to get paved this fall, but doesn't look good because can't get nobody to do it. Everybody's tied up tinsley, and everybody is pretty much booked up, so, thank you, LA. We probably won't be any more paving done the rest of the year. Thank you.
Legislative Policy and Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legislative Committee met October 6th to accept the committee description changes for safety, county correction partnership, and sanitation. Also, we had one rule modification, which we'll describe and go into a little further down the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Safety. Policy and Personnel, may I ask you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Policy and Personnel has nothing to report. Thank you.
Now, safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, everything's running pretty smooth, we'll have a little more information, maybe the next month's meeting about our, for the sanitation department.
But thank you. County Correction Partnership. Who's the vice chairman?
Had to think for a minute. We have nothing to report this time, thank you.
ARP Review has nothing to report at this time. We'll move right on to new business. Justin, do you want to explain this?
Sure thing. This is a CDBG grant from the Upper Cumberland Development District. This would be, the motion would be to accept this grant, and then to begin the process of appropriating the funds so these projects can get started.
This project was done started before we come in, before I come into office, and there'll be no funds out of taxpayer dollars issued on this project here. It's just all pass-through, is all it is. Got a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Kenny Moffett. Is any questions? Anybody got any question? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is pass-through? Excuse my ignorance.
It means there'll be no money coming out of the actual county budget, or any county money used on this at all. It'll all come through the Upper Cumberland.
Yeah, so what we'll do is, we'll, we accept the grant, and then once the grant starts rolling, as the bills come in, we will pay the bills, and then the administering state government will reimburse us 100% of the funding that goes out. So we are just the pass-through entity, so we pay the bills out, and then the money comes right back. So in the, at the end of the project line, we'll have no, no actual effect on the county's, county's funding.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any more questions? If no one has any questions, the clerk call roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty yes.
Motion passes twenty yes. Now we'll move on to the legislative rule changes. Mr. Christie Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each term, we have to renew our acceptance of the new rules for the legislative body. As I alluded to earlier, there were some responsibility reallocations that were submitted to the legislative committee from these respective committees, and you should have a copy of them in your packet. The rules are, changes are as follows. The Health and Welfare Committee will relinquish its responsibility to review and make recommendations to the budget and monthly reports for the sanitation department. The Safety Committee and Beer Board will accept the responsibility to review and make recommendations to the budget and monthly reports for the sanitation department. The Safety Committee and Beer Board will relinquish its responsibility to review and make recommendations to the budget and monthly reports for the Warren County Sheriff's Department. The Safety Committee and Beer Board will relinquish its responsibility to review and make recommendations to the budget and monthly reports for the Warren County Jail. The County Corrections Partnership Committee will accept the responsibility to review and make recommendations to the budget and monthly reports for the Warren County Sheriff's Department. And the County Corrections Partnership Committee will accept the responsibility to review and make recommendations to the budget and monthly reports for the Warren County Jail. Changes to one rule on Rule 16. A copy of committee minutes will be emailed to each commissioner as the county executive office receives them, and it will delete that the minutes be attached to the monthly meeting and spread across the commission minutes. These changes pass the legislative committee unanimously, and I so move.
Second.
Make a motion to approve all the rules with the changes, right, Christie?
Okay.
Second. Got a second by Scott Ruble. Any discussion? All right, then no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes twenty zero. Mr. Tommy Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution Number 19-2022. This is a compensation study proposed resolution. I'm sure all of you have read it, it's on page 75 in your packet. Policy and Personnel met on October 10th, and they passed this, and I so move.
Do I hear a second? Got a second by Philip Stout. Any discussion? Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. What is this gonna cost the taxpayers?
Mr. Britton, if you want to.
As far as the cost, you know, the cost of doing the study, of me, we're figuring somewhere in the $25,000 range.
Somebody didn't say it.
It really kind of depends on how deep the committee wants to get into the study. You know, as we discussed in committee, the compensation part of it is one piece, but the whole discussion around employee benefits and all that, you know, our recommendation is to really keep it focused, the compensation side first, and then as time allows us, we can get deeper into the benefits side of it.
Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Britton, we, and this is just for transparency sake, we spoke about this in the meeting last week, and just want to let everybody know, in the event that we do put some sort of policy in place as far as payroll, or as far as schedules go, and classification, if the departments choose to opt out, providing they provide their own policy, is there anything that will prevent us from mandating that they stay within our policy?
This might be a better question for Mr. Bratcher, but the only opting out that I know of is to opt out to a full human resources policy manual. As you know, today, the human resource policy manual that we have adopted doesn't have pay scales in it, because there has not been any consistency. So, that was, what was asked of me was to try to do a study of all the county positions and see what disparity we may have from one job title to the next throughout our county operations. So, my personal opinion is that everybody would fall under the guidelines of the wage structure if that's what's adopted by this commission. I mean, it's strictly a study to give you information of how our jobs and how they vary across the county. We've done very little digging in, I mean, we've got some preliminary data, but nothing we've done concrete wise yet, because we want to make sure this committee sets the tone of what we need to look at.
Got a question. Highway Superintendent says he's not, not gonna do it.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Cole?
Would this not be something that Policy and Personnel and Budget Finance, and maybe the Finance Department could do together, maybe save taxpayer dollars?
That would be up to y'all.
I mean, this kind of addresses, I mean, Budget Finance addresses these things, nothing toward Mr. Britton at all, I'm just kind of curious if that'd be something that might, could happen, you know? Would it be a Policy and Personnel issue, and a Budget Finance issue, and Financial Management too?
It'd just be according to how much time the commissioners want to put in. Well, I'm here to save taxpayer dollars, so I'm in. Mr. Moffett?
Is this not some, the salary portion of it, is that not something that is public knowledge at each of the county levels?
The Freedom of Information Act allows access to that information anyway, provided the other counties will play it fairly. You know, when we did this high-level study about a year and a half ago, a few of them played and some didn't. But yes, that information, the information that's available as far as what the pay is, comparing pay across all of our job titles, is something that's a little different than what's available through the Freedom of Information Act. You know, the other thing about it is, one of the things that's designed to get us there is to get some uniform job descriptions throughout the county, so that we have, we have the essential functions clearly identified, because that's what really should drive pay levels and essential functions, you know, along the seniority and longevity of being with the county and all that.
Any more discussion?
On Section 2, you have six members of this committee. In case of a tie, who's gonna break that tie? And the second question, so I can just ask one, is if this is exactly the same thing as the HR manual, that once we've completed this, different departments, which I've done heard of two departments that will not abide by it, they'll have their own thing. So, we're spending $25,000, $30,000 on something that people can or cannot use, and it's gonna be their choice, that seems like a little bit of a waste of money. That's just my personal opinion. But the, you still need to resolve that tie on that six-person committee.
Yeah, we'll be glad to do that. That's the problem, I don't mind adding another member, or...
Any more discussion?
Let Mr. Bell pass the deciding vote.
Mr. Chris.
Thank you. I would like to see if legal has any pros or cons for it or against it, to see what that, what difference that may make, if there is any.
The way I understand this proposal is that this committee is primarily going to look at the wages and benefits that the people across the county are receiving, as compared to what our HR policy now is, more about each department's ability to control their employees, and how much, you know, vacation and sick time and paid leave that they have. So there's a little bit of a difference, it's not a full overlap in what they're beginning. The primary benefit I would see is that from a liability perspective, we would be able to have a strong defense to any type of employment lawsuits, if we have well-defined job descriptions, and that all the employees know exactly what their duties and roles are when they have a function. So that could be beneficial from that perspective. Employment lawsuits can be very expensive if they, if they come back as a justice against us, it's one of the things that we definitely want to temper down on by having well-defined job descriptions, everyone has a good understanding of what their roles are.
Is that not something that each department elected official has any way in place, job descriptions of what, I mean, you have somebody working for you, you have your own job descriptions, if it's the, if it's the janitor, or if it's somebody that answers the telephone or whatnot? That's something can be done in-house.
Yeah, and to a large degree, there are some, some of this is completely out of our control, because constitutional officers and elected officials have the ability to create their own HR policies if they want to inside of their own departments. If they do not do that, then the general county HR policy is gonna apply to everyone. But the HR policy doesn't speak to expenses, it doesn't speak to wages that people are making, and it doesn't speak to some benefits. So, some of what's in the black and white of those documents just isn't addressed in what the study will be addressing. And as to whether or not it's a total financial gain or loss, you know, I don't know, I... And as to whether or not it's a total financial gain or loss, you know, I don't know. I, you know, I can't, I'm not a bean counter on that particular subject, but I definitely can say it's good to know from an employment lawsuit standpoint to have something like this on hand.
More discussion? Mr. Ruble.
Mr. Bratcher, this question would be directed to you, and I know this is recommendation, and we can change anything, as long as we get the majority vote, but from my interpretation of conflict of interest, and nothing against Mr. Britton or any of the people that are going to be there, because the people, the three individuals who are not elected officials that are named in the committee are employees of the county, Mr. Britton would be contracted by the county, and would that not be an implied conflict of interest if they were voting members? And we need their input, no doubt. They are, they are the specialists in this, but my question is, could they be voting members without an implied conflict of interest?
Yes, I think they could in this particular situation, because it'd be an ad hoc committee. None of the results of the committee would bind the county in any way. It would simply be an amount of information to deliver a report at the conclusion, and therefore, a full body committee decision on how they want to achieve that. And I don't, as far as I understand, there's not going to be no pay for being on the commission. Is that correct? Obviously, there is an overlap in the fact that the ESC is conducting this, but it's the committee that's going to be receiving reports.
Any more discussion? Mr. Ellis.
As, as far as what Commissioner Taylor mentioned a minute ago, I was just curious, as far as Mr. Cotton is concerned, if he thought that it is feasible, would be feasible for him and Anita and people in finance to do this.
That's a hard question to answer, because you're looking at a very specific set of employment, you know, structures here. None of my staff, I would call an expert on just general employment navigation. Like, yes, we do the county's HR to an extent. We do the finances. I mean, I could crunch the numbers all day, and it looks, I probably would be one of the, you know, two people running numbers on this if I'm on the committee. But you're talking about the, the amount of man hours involved for us to do our normal operations on top of trying to undertake this study and reach out to, no telling how many different organizations to try to compile that data. Could we do it? Yes. Do I know where that number would lie as far as amount of overtime that would require? As the only salary member in my office, I mean, my time's, you know, paid for, but everybody else that would be involved would be, you know, have to be doing this in and above their normal operations already. And, you know, I don't know where those legal parameters are as far as, I can make recommendations all day, but I don't know, I'm not an HR or a labor law person, so I don't know if, I would say I have the expertise to, to actually help, be primary on the study to begin with.
Any more discussion? Does everybody understand what we're voting on? We're voting on a compensation study proposed resolution with an expenditure on it, so we'll have to call the roll. If nobody wants to discuss anymore, I'll ask.
One more question. Where's the twenty-five thousand dollars for Calro?
We currently have fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget under our Personnel Office, the same place we had fifty thousand dollars to do the HR manual. So, there is money in the budget currently for this study to be done.
Any more discussion?
I would like to say, in addition to what Mr. Bratcher said, there is not any obligation to do anything with the information that's provided, but it's to get that baseline so that you know as a legislative body, the differences across the county, and to address some of those liabilities. So, we could technically do the report with everybody's involvement, and you choose not to do anything with it, so it's not like it's something that you're, you're going to move on regardless. It's just a committee report that will come out, and here's where we have liability across the county, and can we afford to do anything about it, or want to make any of those changes.
Mr. Taylor.
I'll say this real quick. I'm sure we need to work on some employment benefits and stuff like that, there's no doubt about it, but the biggest thing that concerns me with this is, is spending the money to do something when it's not necessarily a mandate and directors don't have to follow it. That, you know, we've already told them they can opt out of it, and we've already talked with one that's going to for sure, that's a guarantee probably. And I've also heard of maybe one or two other ones. And so, we're right back to square one where we're at before we ever started this, because that's the thing that I worry about, is our directors don't have to follow this, so why spend the money? I mean, most of them are probably not going to, so why spend the money on doing it whenever, maybe we could do some stuff in-house to maybe better some things and stuff like that. That's, that's where I'm at with it. I just, I hate to see the money spent whenever director's going to opt out of it anyhow probably, or some of them will, and then we're right back to where we started. That's where I'm at.
Any more discussion? If not, then just spend some money. We're going to ask Clerk Calro.
Michael Bell.
No.
Because your last name would be. Carl D. Bolden.
No.
Randy England.
No.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
No.
Scott Kelly.
No.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
No.
Cam Montgomery.
No.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
No.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
No.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
No.
Cole Taylor.
No.
Blaine Wiltshire.
No.
Any one more change or vote? Eight yes, twelve no.
Eight yes and twelve no. The resolution fails. We'll move to item number four. Mr. Scott Ruble.
Mr. Chairman, I deferred that interpretation to Mr. Cotton.
Which one we have here? This is, this amendment, gee, do you want to speak on this before I get started? Do you want to go on this before I get started? This is the sheriff's. No, you got to go ahead. This is no longer.
All right. This is an amendment for the Sheriff's Department to transfer funds, mostly salaries. We'll start off by transferring twenty-five thousand from clerical sta, I mean, from cafeteria personnel in the jail to clerical personnel to hire a part-time employee on the sheriff's side. Then the remainder of that thirty-three, five in cafeteria personnel will be going to seven thousand to investigators, fifteen hundred to captain. And the sheriff would like to move funds out of other salaries and wages, putting twenty thousand in deputies, one thousand in clerical for stopping, and then moving eight thousand from law enforcement equipment to put fifty-six, seventy-two, twenty into investigators, one thousand into captain, five thousand, excuse me, five hundred, ten, forty-two to social security, eight hundred, seventeen, forty-three to pensions.
Do I hear a motion to approve this, or we can discuss?
Most approved.
Got a motion by Scott Ruble. Do I hear a second? Got a second by Blaine Wiltshire. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with sheriff today, and we wanted to make some changes in this. It actually failed budget finance and financial management. It had some things in here with the salaries and stuff like that, and we leave those things for budget time. And he was fine. He wanted to work with us, and he was good about it. And one thing, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to amend this, to take twenty-five thousand dollars out of line item one sixty-five, which is cafeteria personnel, and move it up to clerical personnel, which is line item one sixty-two. And I'd also like to take two thousand dollars out of the line item two oh-one in the social security, which is underneath the jail, and move it up to line item two oh-one under the Sheriff's Department in the social security. And all the rest of it, I'd like to stay, for it to stay where it's at. I'd like to just move a total of twenty-seven thousand dollars total, and I'd like for all, yeah, for that to come out of cafeteria personnel and social security in the jail, and move it up to the Sheriff's Department.
You got it, Jess?
Yep.
All right. We got an amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Scott Ruble. All right. Any discussion?
We're voting on the amendment, right?
They were voting on the amendment to change the amendment. Ms. Smith.
I was wondering, is this, these monies that are being moved, I understand, are within the sheriff's current budget?
Correct.
Okay. Does this mean that more employees are going to be hired, or the current employees are going to get, they're going to divide the money among the current employees, whereas, so, I see Mr. Ruble shaking his head.
All right.
Okay. That was my...
We're, we're taking that out. This amendment takes that out and just allows for him to move this money for clerical personnel. This is all it does.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're not raising his maintenance of effort by no means. No, no maintenance of efforts will be raised in this. He has the money within his budget. He's just hired a new employee, and we're taking this money that we've had as cafeteria funds, because we don't have, we actually contract that out now. We don't have an employee that runs the cafeteria now. We have it contracted out, and that money's sitting there and not being used. So, he's moving that money, so, not all of it, but some of the money over there, which would be twenty-seven, well, twenty-five thousand dollars of it, there'll be, still should remain eight thousand, five hundred bucks still in there, in that position.
Good enough for me, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, darling.
Anybody got any more questions? All right. We're going to vote on the amendment. I'll ask Clerk Calro.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Nineteen yes and one no.
Nineteen yes and one no. So, it passes. Now, we're back on the, we've amended.
I think it might be a little mistaken. She called Scott Ruble twice. Scott only gets one vote.
Okay. Scott Kelly. I'm sorry. I get you.
What's your vote, Scott?
Yes. Maybe I should go by my first name.
Sorry about that. Still nineteen.
Still nineteen, one. All right. We've amended that budget amendment. Now, we got to vote on the amendment, this is the budget amendment that we amended. So, is there any discussion? If not, I'll ask Clerk Calro.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Nineteen yes, one no.
Nineteen yes, one no. Amendment passes. We'll move to item number five, American Rescue Plan Funds Appropriation Memo. All adjustments down the line.
All right. So, as of the date of this memo, we have five thousand, excuse me, five million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars unencumbered in the ARP funds. The ARP, ARP committee has met and reviewed several projects, and in order to claim the revenue loss that were allowed under the final rule, we have elected to charge, to show that we have spent money on sheriff salaries in order for us to move that money out of the ARP funds and into the general fund. This appropriation memo is appropriating one million, eight hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents of that ARP money, which is the amount of the combined jail and sheriff salaries for the first quarter of this fiscal year. Once this money is in the general fund, it will replace the funds that were used to pay for those services provided by the Sheriff's Department, thus, making this money ours to do with as we see fit.
Do I hear a motion? We approve?
Motion to approve.
So, I got a motion by Scott Ruble, second by Cole Taylor. Does everybody understand what we're doing? All right. Well, that's Clerk Calro. There's no questions.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Twenty to zero. Motion passes. Now, we'll move to another budget amendment.
All right. This would be the budget amendment to establish the line item for the entirety of the unencumbered ARP funds, as we sit today, which is the five million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, as a contribution to the general fund from the ARP fund to be received on a quarterly basis as we bill ourselves for sheriff's wages. That is the top portion, forty-eight, one thirty. Second portion of this budget amendment is to create a line item in the general fund in order for us to transfer that money back out as it's received to establish a capital projects fund, so that this money can still be used for large projects for the county, and so that it is not commingled with normal general fund revenues, and thus lumped in with our fund balance come budget time.
So move.
Got a motion. Mr. Scott Ruble, a second by Brad Hillis. Anybody have any questions? All right. Nobody has any questions. We'll ask Clerk Calro.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Yes.
Scott Rubbley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Motion passes, twenty to zero. All right, now this next appropriation is just coming out of the fund you just created. The ARP committee's met and we appropriated $314,000 to purchase nine advanced heart monitors, defibrillators, along with accessories needed for operational service plans and trading of eight current units, and $200,000 to purchase land improvements to set land for SMART and Morrison convenience centers.
Move to approve.
We got a motion by Mr. Lee and a second by Stevie Glenn. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Cap?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The old defibrillators that we have, do we get a credit on those if we turn those in?
Do we?
We did.
We did. We did get some out of them.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more questions? Now this money you're appropriating for the SMART and Morrison convenience centers will not be enough to complete those projects. We will be coming back at a later date. This is just to purchase land and do some of the site prep work and get things ready where we can put these convenience centers in, but it's going to be more costly than what we're appropriating here tonight. Anybody have any more questions? If not, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rubbley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Motion passes, twenty to zero. All right, we'll move to, Mr. Rubbley, you want to handle this budget amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an easy one and I figured you thought I was capable. But this is GFY 2223-9 and this is moving $3,500 to travel. Brad had said that they have some training that needs to be done and it will require travel and for informational purposes, this is all grant money. His entire budget is grant money. This is just pass through, but he needs our approval and I so move.
Second. Got a motion by Scott, second by Randy. Any discussion? And no discussion. We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rubbley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Motion passes, twenty to zero. All right, now we're at approval and notaries. Ms. Lisa Scott.
This is the list for the notaries. Lisa Hillis Berks, Angie S. Cossey, Julie G. Cantrell, Amanda Leonardo, Samantha Savage, Jennifer Southworth, Brandon J. Steg, William E. Upton, Valera Vera, Dolores Thrower, Shannon Adcock, Lisa A. Hillis, Teresa F. Boran, Susan E. Davenport, Philip Prater, Lisa Crawford, Michael Cartwright, Dwight Kevin Pierceall, Tyler E. Herriman, and Sabrina Keaton.
Motion to approve. Second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, zero. Now we're approving the Constable Honor Mark Gertrun. Do I hear a motion?
Most approved.
Motion by Scott Rubbley, second by Randy England. Any discussion? This, all the constables have to have bonds approved just like the other elected officials. Lisa, if you would, call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rubbley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Passes, twenty to zero. Mr. Rubbley, you want to handle this contract for discovery?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm on number, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, this is the Bloom USA. Director Cotton may have a little more information on that since the director is not here, but it passed and I so move.
Got a motion by Scott and a second by Calhoun. This has to come before the county court because we're making three-year contracts.
Yes, this ties up money in three separate fiscal years. The monetary outlay is far below our normal limits, however, because it involves three fiscal years worth of funding, it is required to be approved by the county commission.
Any more questions? If not, clerk call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rubbley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Twenty to zero. Motion passes. We've got the amended budget amendment. Mr. Rubbley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Highway FY 2223-1 and we will be moving $2,500 from tires and tubes into tolling services. Director Glenn informed us in financial management earlier in the week that this had been approved through highway and bridge unanimously. It did not go to budget and finance because we had already had the meeting, so for transparency's sake, we decided to go ahead and put it on the docket so everyone would know and I so move.
Got a second by Mr. Blaine Wiltshire. Is there any discussion? If nobody has any questions, we'll ask clerk call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffett.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rubbley.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change or vote? Twenty yes.
Passes, twenty to zero. We have no special presentation under announcement. Mr. Blaine Wiltshire's got a letter he left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is from Annie Moffett, Administrative Assistant at Habitat for Humanity of Warren County. Says, "Thank you for your $10,000 grant to the Habitat for Humanity of Warren County as a tax-exempt organization under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue. Every contribution makes an impact. We are so thankful for your support. With your generous grant, we will be able to help accommodate more families. Thank you for being an important part of our mission and supporting the county we all call home."
Bye. Does anybody else have any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, just a real quick note. Out at the T-Cat School, we are growing in leaps and bounds and we have now got a grant and we are now going to be start teaching truck driving. So we, the school has purchased a truck. Yeah, I've got Stephen Helft on it. But we have purchased a truck and they're getting it retrofitted where they can haul students in it and we've hired an instructor. So be thinking about that if you know anybody that would like to learn to drive a truck. And also, we've hired a massage therapist and so we're going to start teaching massage therapy out there. And also our other programs are growing in leaps and bounds and my program needs a few. So if you want to learn to be a machinist, come see us. But good things are going on at the T-Cat School. So I just want you to know that.
Just real quick, some of y'all know the pastor out at Friendship Baptist Church, Jason Brown, had a bad accident last week. He fell out of a tree stand. He's still at Erlanger. I know some of the commissioners know him, but if you don't know, he's real big and as far as voting stuff, had a lot of voting precincts out of his church. I just need prayers. I'm going to visit tomorrow. He's actually my brother-in-law too, so a lot of county support would be needed. Right now, still kind of in the same spot. Spirits are kind of up and down, but kind of need some prayers, but we're hoping and believing he'll be able to, you know, get back at it. So just wanted to mention that.
Keep him in prayers. Anybody else have anything? If not, I'll accept a motion adjourned. Make a motion, we adjourn. Second. Got a motion by Calhoun, second by Philip Stout. All in favor say aye. Aye.